At 6:05 PM, I'm going to ask our city treasurer to do the pledge of allegiance, and I'll ask Councilwoman Valentine to do the invocation today.
Okay.
So invocation first, please.
Please bow your heads. Thank you Heavenly Father for bringing this city 100 years, 100 years of trying to do good for the residents of the city. Bless us as we move forward into the next 100 years. Keep us safe. Help this council to make good decisions and wise decisions for the benefit of the residents of this city. Thank you. Amen.
Amen. All right, everyone, please rise and face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
All right, thank you all for being here. Can we have the roll call?
Please, sir. Councilmember Montero, Councilmember Reyes English.
Here.
Councilmember Valentine.
Here.
Mayor Protem Patterson.
Here.
And Mayor Vargas.
Here.
All are present except for Councilmember Montero.
And he did notify, so it's an excuse for the record. Okay. Okay, our first item is a presentation from City Manager Norris on the Centennial Recap. So go ahead, sir.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, City of Hawthorne residents. Thank you, honorable Mayor Vargas. We're gonna have a recap of our Cable Department that actually put together a quick video. It doesn't really pay justice to all the work that went into the event, because maybe three minutes, but it's a very inclusive compilation of videos, pictures, and just the good time that we had here. Before we get started, I'd like to highlight some of our committee members. These individuals plus city employees actually made this possible. Like to spay, excuse me, pay close attention to these individuals that actually helped with the event. We have Amy Yoshida, we have Rebecca Sanchez, we have Akbar Faroki, Kimberly Mack, Miguel Alvarez, Felice Lopez, Kwanabui, Gerardo Duran, Brenda Williams, we have Selena, Eric Chavez, Jerry Idiate, Nicole, and all the employees from the City of Hawthorne that actually helped to make this event great, and especially the Cable Department, thank you, and our leadership here of the council. So when you're ready, Francisco, you can play the video.
Pretty darn cool.
That concludes the video, but that's just a small caption of the energy that the staff put in. A great event. I mean, I think the video was great. I think it really showcased the five days events that we had across the city, and hopefully we set the bar high for the next 100 years for the future staff that will be here and the future leadership. And thank you for your support.
Thank you, Vaughn and staff. Let's give them a round of applause for everybody responsible for organizing. Any comments from my councilmember colleagues?
Yes, through the chair.
Go ahead.
I want to, I want to thank the city manager personally, and the city attorney, and all who put the effort into making this a great event. It was a great event, even if I must say so myself, but it was great also because of the participation of the community. Everyone came out. It looked like the whole city was there. And it was, I was looking, as I was looking at the video, I was remembering the joy on the faces of the children. The people were having so much fun. Everyone just had such a great time. And it was organized so well. I think we, I think, and we owe our Police Department and our Public Works Department a great amount of gratitude. So let's give them a round of applause as well. There are so many people to thank, you can't possibly thank everyone, but I do want to thank everyone who participated and everyone who organized this great event for us, for the residents of this city. Thank you all.
Up through the chair.
Yes.
Of course, I want to thank the city manager, I want to thank all of the staff, I want to thank the interns as well for the roles that you guys played in putting this together. I was thoroughly impressed. I had just a great time, and I know the community had a great time. And a few people came up to me at the block party, asking if we can do the parade and block party on an annual basis, which I think some other council members had suggested that same thing. So, you know, I'm all for it. It was nothing but fun for me, so I couldn't, would never say no to that. But I just want to thank you guys for doing a great job. I know some of you, this is probably your first time in whatever positions that you're serving in in the city, and did a great job of really kind of, you know, bringing the history of Hawthorne into the present day and showcasing, you know, all we've accomplished. So I appreciate you guys.
To the chair.
Yes.
Thank you. I too just want to express great efforts that I saw, and more importantly, the leadership of Vaughn Norris, our city manager. Thank you, Vaughn, so much. I think his involvement, more importantly, in the community and his, in his prior work with the Recreation, Department of Recreation, Parks and Recreation was very helpful and instrumental in just coordinating everyone's efforts in the departments and, more importantly, the parade itself. I personally would like to thank Mr. Gary Primo for helping with the, facilitate the use of his vehicles for the parade. I think that was very great of him, and he's been very gracious in previous years to do that, so thank you, Mr. Primo. And all to, and to all the other businesses that helped and contributed in some way. It was a great 100 years, and it was because of all those that contributed and helped in making this happen. So again, just kudos to everybody, the committee, everyone that was involved from the beginning to the end, from Friday through, you know, Tuesday, it seemed like it was just going on for forever, but thank you so much. And again, I can express great gratitude for that. Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues, and I also want to give my appreciation to our city manager, our staff, and all those, the boots on the ground, as we say. And one of the interesting part things, there was five, four events, five, you know, including my state of the city, but one of the things is, I don't know if you guys realize it, if you drove down the day before the parade, you know, you guys driving up, you didn't, you couldn't even tell there was gonna be anything happening, right? So we had staff showing up at two, one in the morning, two o'clock in the morning, three o'clock in the morning, setting everything up. So I don't know, I don't think, I don't know if you guys realize it, maybe you did, but the community might not, so Public Works came out, started setting up, staff started setting up the, the everything, the platforms, the viewing platforms, the, you know, the, all the booths, tons of stuff that had to be situated. So that was a big coordinated effort. And I do, I'm also in sync with my council colleagues, I think I mentioned to our city manager that I think we have the recipe for a parade every year, and a block party every year, so I think we, and all we gotta do is open up the folder with all the, with the recipe, right? Don't we all have cookbooks that we could open up and what's the recipe for this? What's the recipe for that, right? So I think we have the perfect recipe for that. And so we had the five events. So I want to thank the businesses who pitched in money for, to be able to pay for certain things that we had to, staff, management, the police, the elected officials, and to the residents who came out to participate. We had people come from the East Coast just for the event because they were from Hawthorne, so it was like a homecoming for people, so it was a big deal. It was a big event. And so, Mr. City Manager, I know you have, I guess, our cable news program, news channel peoples, they have a lot of video footage, so maybe we have extended, extended programs for each of the events coming up? With time, we could maybe develop something like that.
Absolutely, they're editing as we speak, but before we lost the luster from the event, we wanted to bring a quick recap of what happened.
Exactly. There's no hurry, right? Because we're in our centennial year, so it's not like we needed it today or anything or a couple of weeks after. So take your time so we could highlight it and, what do you call it, memorialize this as best possible. Thank you. Thank you once more. Let's give them all a round of applause. Again. Our first item tonight is a presentation. So presentations precede the oral communications. These are just presentations, that's all it is. All right, so, well, that was the, no, that was the first presentation, actually. So Mayor Protem, you have a presentation on the California Department of Insurance. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, sir. We have a representative from the California Department of Insurance come talk about a low-cost insurance program, so.
Do I need to turn this on, or is the mic on?
Mic's on.
Okay. Speak up. Good evening, Mayor Vargas, Mayor Protem, and council members. Thank you so much for allowing the Department of Insurance to make this brief presentation tonight. My name is Armines Arkson. I'm an outreach analyst with the department, and I'm here to just provide you with a brief overview of who we are as a department, because we realize a lot of people have not even heard of the Department of Insurance, as well as provide you a brief overview of the California Low Cost Auto Insurance Program, also known as CLCA. So the Department of Insurance is a state agency, and we regulate insurance. So our responsibility is to license agents and brokers, ensure that policy premiums that you pay are reasonable and not discriminatory. We also conduct market contact reviews, and whenever there is insurance fraud or abuse, we are the agency to provide you assistance, to bring you restitution, and to prosecute those who have taken your money and committed fraud. So if at any time you need assistance with your insurance policy, if you simply have a question, you don't understand your policy, you could always give us a call. Our hotline is actually answered Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. We speak multiple languages, and that number is 800-927-4357. You may also contact us on our website, insurance.ca.gov. You could even file a complaint online. So in terms of auto insurance, California law mandates that if you drive on California's roadways, you must have proof of financial responsibility, which means you need to carry liability insurance. And there are penalties if you are caught driving without insurance. And so realizing that there are a number of uninsured drivers in California, the California State Legislature created the Low Cost Auto Insurance Program in 1999, and this provides affordable, low liability insurance to those who meet certain income guidelines. This is a state program, however, as a department, we do not sell any insurance. To qualify for this program, you need to have a valid driver's license or an AB60 license. Your vehicle cannot be valued over $25,000 and be financed. I will discuss the income guidelines in the next slide. You need to be over the age of 16, and lastly, you cannot have a bad driving record, which means in the last three years, you could not have had an at-fault auto accident or more than one point on your driving record. In terms of the income eligibility, as you can see, I know it might be a little difficult to see the graph right next to the map, but these income criterias are based on the federal poverty levels. They reset every year in May. And for example, let's say you are a household of five, and that also includes dependents, your annual income cannot exceed $81,175. But for families who are struggling and we realize, especially after the, during the COVID-19 pandemic, this is a great option to have to be insured. In terms of the rates, so it is based on the county where we reside, so LA County, if you look under the annual liability premium chart, LA County is number five on that list. If you are a good driver with over three years of experience, over the age of 24, then your annual premium will be $483. This does increase up to 966 based on your age and years that you have been driving. So in terms of what you need to apply, a valid driver's license, valid registration, proof of insurance, and at least a 20% annual premium of that, let's say, $483 that you need to pay, which means roughly $96.60 as an initial payment. In terms of proof of income, it could be a number of documents that you could provide that shows how much you earn. The full list is available on the CLCA website, which is mylowcostauto.com. And again, how to apply, right? So visit mylowcostauto.com. 100% of the application is online. You would first need to take an eligibility questionnaire. It's very short, seven questions, after which, should the system decide that you qualify for the program, you'll be prompted to the application. Once you submit your application, an agent, a licensed agent, will contact you to collect your documents, to collect your payment, and be able to bind you a new auto policy. If at any point you have questions about the program, please call the CLCA program Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM at 866-602-8861, or you could also have the option to chat online on that website. And lastly, I'll just leave you again with the CLCA contact information, the Department of Insurance contact information, and we're always happy to come back if you ever need any insurance questions answered. Thank you so much for your time.
Do have a quick question. Is the only coverage offered is liability?
So the CLCA program does offer liability only, given that it is the only required auto insurance in California. However, there are supplemental comprehensive coverages that you can purchase, as well for low cost as well, but there are options.
To the chair.
Yes.
Thank you. I don't think my mic was on, now it is. Is there any way we get information from your department as to how many residents in Hawthorne has already been successful with your services with regards to their, based on income, right?
Right. I could see if we could pull that information. I know because CLCA is not really a state agency.
Right.
It might be, it might take us a little time, but we'll see if we could get that information for you.
Yeah, I think if it's instrumental for us to promote this, we'd like to know exactly, you know, how it's been affected and how it's assisted residents in Hawthorne, exclusive in LA County, and if you could just work with shooting that over to the city managers, that would be great.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, ma'am, for taking the time to come and passing along this important information. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, let's take a quick look. So that was the only other, those were the two presentations we had tonight. So Mr. City Clerk, please go ahead and read the guidelines for oral communications.
All right. Pursuit to Government Code Section 54954.3. All remarks should be addressed to the City Council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communications, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the City Council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation. Mr. Mayor, we received one email from July 19, 2022, which was inadvertently omitted from the July 19, 2022 special meeting. It is generally in support of commercial cannabis in Hawthorne. We received a second email today. It is generally against cannabis dispensaries operating in Hawthorne.
Thank you, Mr. City Clerk. So let's see, let's see what we have today. Oh, okay. All right, let's start off with Mr., with William Ridgway. Sir, welcome.
Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's my first time doing this, so please bear with me, I'm very nervous. I'm gonna hate to be kind of negative, but I'm here just to kind of express some thoughts about the new, well, it's not new, but it's new to the apartment buildings, and I guess I'm here to talk about the recycling program for the apartment buildings, small and large. I feel that the program should be halted until further engineering, logistics, and practical applications can be improved on the program. A recycling program is a great idea, but if it does not work or serve its purpose, then it should be halted, and I hope that we can all agree on that. If something isn't working, we should try something else. And there are several things, in particular, one of them, there is no standard criteria, as far as I can see, for the application of this program. For example, the amount of receptacles are the same for a single-family home, a small apartment building, or a large apartment complex. So there's no criteria, it doesn't make any sense that the same receptacles can serve all that different type of material. And I do have some photos. I went around the city and took some photos of some of these receptacles that are still, it's just a, it's kind of a willy-nilly program that kind of was set in motion, I guess, several months back, and we've been charged about a month or so ago, and we've only got the receptacles about three weeks ago. So it was kind of a haphazard way to do it, and I don't think it was kind of well thought out. And a second thing is, there's no way to enforce it. How do we enforce the tenants in apartment complexes to separate their trash by hand and carry it out and separate it? If we all know apartments, you know, if we live in them, or if we live in the City of Hawthorne or in an apartment, we put our garbage in a bag, we take it down and put it in the dumpster. We don't separate it individually by hand. So that's impractical and, as well. So the enforcement of this program is basically almost impossible to monitor and to enforce. Lastly, or thirdly, the recycle program in Hawthorne that we do have, we have an unofficial recycling program, which I'm very proud of, and I think the citizens of the City of Hawthorne should take, you know, pride in that. And, you know, the tenants recycle their own. We recycle our own aluminums, our own plastics, and the things that do get into the bins, we have great citizens of the City of Hawthorne to come around and pull them from the dumpsters themselves. So we have a great recycling program for that, and to have another one would be redundant, therefore, I think ineffective and should be halted. I also mentioned small mom and pop, I mentioned different types of apartment buildings. There are large ones and small ones. I happen to own a small one. I call it a mom and pop. At a mom and pop apartment complex, we do not have an onsite manager, nor typically do we have a management team, or at least I haven't. And we've been managing this since 1985. So therefore, the program also creates an undue burden on that type of building, the mom and pop. I have to have somebody come out on Thursday to take their receptacles out, because Republic Services won't come on the property to take them. They take the big dumpster, but they don't take these. So I'll have to have somebody come out on Thursday to take them out, remove them on Friday. It's impractical and an undue burden on those types of apartment owners.
Mr. City Clerk?
Sorry, sir, you've gone over your time of three minutes.
Can you summarize it up for, please, sir?
Yes. The program is a great idea. Recycling is wonderful. However, the way that it has been done unto the city here, it's done, I think, haphazardly, kind of fast and rapidly, without much thought or criteria. And therefore, I think it should be halted, because ultimately, the landlords are paying three times the amount. You also have three times the amount of vehicles on the street picking up these new receptacles or attempting to pick them up, but nobody's utilizing them. So therefore, it's ineffective, and
Okay.
If we're talking about the environment, why don't Republic Services invest in clean burning vehicles? I have also photos of gas-burning, smoke-ridden, grease-spilling vehicles, and we're gonna have three times as many of those on the street now, because of this program that is virtually ineffective and should be halted immediately.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for putting that on the record. I appreciate it. So Mr. Ridgway, thank you. Sylvia Delgado?
My name is Sylvia Delgado, and I'm just here because I need some assistance with, I was renting an apartment and I moved out.
do we have a management team, or at least I haven't. And we've been managing this since 1985. So therefore, the program also creates an undue burden on that type of building, the mom and pop. I have to have somebody come out on Thursday to take their receptacles out because Republic Services won't come on the property to take them. They take the big dumpster, but they don't take these. So I'll have to have somebody come out on Thursday to take them out, remove them on Friday. It's impractical and an undue burden on those types of apartment owners.
Mr. City Clerk?
Sorry, sir, you've gone over your time of three minutes.
Can you summarize it up for, please, sir?
Yes. The program is a great idea. Recycling is wonderful. However, the way that it has been done unto the city here, it's done, I think, haphazardly, kind of fast and rapidly, without much thought or criteria. And therefore, I think it should be halted because ultimately, the landlords are paying three times the amount. You also have three times the amount of vehicles on the street picking up these new receptacles or attempting to pick them up, but nobody's utilizing them. So therefore, it's ineffective, and
Okay.
if we're talking about the environment, why don't Republic Services invest in clean burning vehicles? I have also photos of gas-burning, smoke-ridden, grease-spilling vehicles, and we're going to have three times as many of those on the street now because of this program that is virtually ineffective and should be halted immediately.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for putting that on the record. I appreciate it. So Mr. Ridgway, thank you. Sylvia Delgado?
Good evening. My name is Sylvia Delgado, and I'm just here because I need some assistance with, I was renting an apartment and I move out, I gave the notice to my landlord, but now he doesn't, he refuses to give me the deposit because he says that I need to remodel the floors and paint the apartment and have a deep cleaning. I'm new to California. I moved in 2018. I'm from the military, and when I moved, I actually was kind of rushing to find an apartment. I didn't check the apartment in detail because I was not used to renting. It was my first time renting. So now, when I went and turned in the apartment, he checked by detail, and he refuses to give me my $1,000 deposit. And I left July 23rd, and I haven't got in contact with him because I'm not going to be arguing, so I need some guidance on who or how I can get, because he's been doing that for previous owners, tenants, but I guess nobody has sent anything, and I just want to like kind of get assistance and see if there's a possibility for me to get the rental.
Thank you, ma'am, for being here. Our city has assembled some resources. Do you have the sheet available? Can somebody get that sheet available for her with the resources?
Absolutely. I can have her card or her information. I can get that to her tomorrow.
Yes, it's mostly, it is a tenant and landlord matter. We do have resources to give you the necessary assistance to be able to either mediate or possibly even take them to court. We have that assembled in a sheet with information. Can you please give your information to our city manager?
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, for coming. Connie Lee?
Hi, this is Sunny Lee. I'm here for a building owner who is Mr. and Mrs. Lee, address 14205 Hawthorne, Inglewood Avenue in Hawthorne. We have a problem because I, the owner has been trying very hard to make a building very, very nice, and they increased their cleaners and gardeners, and they are trying their best to make it building very nice. And I was so glad to have a tenant who is a cellular phone seller and found after a couple of years old, and they are having illegal business there. And last week, we were visiting there, and they have illegal business. I couldn't meet people, and we send out, what I can do right now, I could send a notice of, a notice of quit about the lease, and I need help from city. So I need to know, actually, city enforcement called and having communication, but I really, really, really need help from the city.
Thank you, ma'am, for presenting this to us. Our city manager can coordinate with our code enforcement, our licensees department to be able to establish exactly what's happening, and if they're not licensed, we don't allow for unlicensed businesses to operate in the city. So you're absolutely right. So our city manager here, you can talk to him and you can coordinate with him.
Okay, since I have a
And our city attorney right here, too.
Okay. We have a lease with Ryan Abello, and he's not there, and I cannot, I cannot have him. He's totally disconnected, and someone else, we never know. I never see, they blocked already. They didn't have any permission, but they modify inside already, and it smelled horrible. I don't know what kind of business they do. Smelled horrible, and there is children around. So it is, it is really about the health and safety.
So I'm going to ask actually our city attorney to get your information so he could coordinate with you. Mr. City Attorney, could you just get our information or? Okay, one of our student interns is going to get your information and pass it along to our city attorney.
And?
Could you come over here and just pass it? Do you have anything to add, ma'am?
Yes. So is there, is there, can I have a help from the city? Can?
That's what I'm asking you to coordinate with them. Exactly. These are our two top administrators here in the city. Okay? Thank you, ma'am, for being here. Jasmine Leon Guerrero, a representative from Senator Steve Bradford's office, is here, and she's going to tell us about Senator Bradford's Back to School Resource Fair and Backpack Giveaway Program and his Annual Gardena Jazz Festival. Thank you for being here, Ms. Guerrero.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Protem and council members. Happy to be here. I just wanted to jump on here today and let you know about Senator Bradford's Back to School Resource Fair and Backpack Giveaway. We'll be giving away 500 backpacks for the under-resourced youth in our community, and this is throughout the whole 35th Senate District, so everyone is invited. And this will be held on August 13th, which is a Saturday, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and it will be at Cal State Dominguez Hills. It'll be an outside event, so it'll be at the North Lawn. And the senator will also be there, of course, to be on hand to provide legislative and district updates as well as answer any questions. As far as the school resource fair, we'll have a lot of exhibit and resource booths, such as services that would give health screenings, immunizations, dental screenings, vision screenings, COVID testing, blood pressure, glucose tests, and housing rental assistance resources, as well as haircuts for the kids and other kids' activities, as well as a program that we're going to have throughout the day. So I'm also, I'm going to be leaving a couple flyers outside at the city hall for some people to pick up, and if you have any questions, you may call me at 310-412-6120. My email is also on here. We have a registration link. You are not required to pre-register before the event, but it's highly encouraged, so you can just get right in and enjoy the fun. I also wanted to mention Senator Bradford's. I'm sure you all have been there. You've been all invited to his jazz festival that he has every year. I believe this is the 19th year. It's going to be on August 28th, so that is two weeks later on a Sunday, and it'll be at Rowley Park in Gardena, and it's always a lot of fun, and we encourage everybody to come out and join the fun. And I also wanted to mention to the residents, we, our office is always available to answer any questions or assist with any state agency programs, such as Housing is Key, or rental assistance, and unemployment assistance, too, and any DMV issues or anything of the sort. So please, again, call me at 310-412-6120. Thank you so much.
Say that again, nice and slow.
Oh, yes.
For everybody, because if I can't get it, I don't think they could get it.
Thank you.
And we have Housing is Key on our resource sheet that we give to the residents who are in a situation, so thank you for that.
Perfect. Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much. Gordon Michael Migo?
Hello, everyone. See you all as well. Tonight, I'll speak on three items here, all related. Energy sources, United States of America. We need a diverse portfolio that is readily available, reasonably priced, and responsibly utilized for we, the people. Nuclear. There is fifth-generation technology that is used to reprocess spent fuel rods onsite for current and new power plants. Coal. There is clean technology that is used to scrub the pollutants from the abundant material to provide electrical power. Crude oil. Current technology is used to eliminate undesirable items before making fuel, plastics, drugs, and many other things. Natural gas. Homes, businesses, and industries rely on it for many uses, including electricity and heat. Geothermal. In California, the steam can generate electrical power. Solar. The sun can provide electricity from homes, businesses, for example, malls.
Excuse me, sir. Can I have, please have quiet in the audience when people are speaking. Full respect for those speakers. Go ahead, sir.
The sun can provide electricity for homes, businesses, like shopping malls, hospitals, office buildings, and so on in various amounts. Now, wind. The propeller-driven units are unreliable, unsightly, and unsafe, re gasoline and diesel fuel prices. Federal government energy policies drive up cost of living. Inflationary financing causes devaluation of the U.S. currency. State of California, governor and legislature are responsible for higher cost of living from taxation, cap, and trade fees, and so on, re electric vehicles, cars, SUVs, trucks. The current designs are inadequate since they require charging after X number of miles. The addition of a high-output alternator can provide adequate power for charging and to run the engine with a much smaller and less costly batteries. And the supply of electrical power in California and other states of the nation will be significantly impacted with brownouts and blackouts. Currently in California, the percentage of vehicles that are electric are like around 1% or approximately. So when you multiply that by 100 and considering the problems that we already have with supply, it's not well thought through, and we need to get the vehicles that we don't have to really go out there and plug it in. It's like, instead of going to a gasoline station, you're going to a charging station. So it's almost like, what have you really accomplished?
Thank you, sir. Laurelia Walker?
Hawthorne City Council members, there continues to be an effort by city leaders to foster growth in the cannabis industry here in the city of Hawthorne. There are many community organizations concerned about the impact this path, this push for economic growth would have on the citizens, their children, and everyone's safety. This tax was voted on by the people with an understanding that the 5% tax would be used for the city if cannabis was ever brought into Hawthorne legally. The language used to create this code is not for the people. According to the Revised Resolution Number 8148 passed on November 3rd, 2020, Section 3, the Hawthorne Municipal Code will tax these industries at 5%. Then, Section 4 of the same resolution, 8148, gives city council the ability to amend and specifically to reduce the tax rate or even create exemptions without any vote of the public. This loophole allows the council the ability to reduce the potential economic benefit of the cannabis industry while still permitting them to do business in our city. We do not think many residents are aware of the power the council holds when bringing a new and largely unwanted industry to our city. We would also like to add on record, dispensaries are not a requirement. Please vote no against cannabis dispensaries operating in the city of Hawthorne. This is a message from the North Hawthorne Community Association, Ruben Sanchez, President, and myself, Laurelia Walker, Secretary. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Patricia Donaldson?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Mayor Protem. Patricia Donaldson, Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce. We are celebrating Casino Night on August 13th from 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. at the Moose Lodge, and the taco lady will be there, and there will be 50/50 and door prizes and money prizes, and that's August 13th. And then September 26th, we're having our eighth annual golf tournament, and there will be, and that's at the Rio Honda Golf Course. There'll be five $100 door prizes, $250 for the longest drive, $250 for the closest to the pin. There will be a 2022 Mustang that will be available if there's a hole-in-one, and that will be from South Bay Ford and Lincoln. There'll be a 50/50. Registration is at 11:00 a.m. Shotgun is at 12 with box lunches, and with registration, there'll be a continental breakfast. And then 5:30, there's going to be a buffet, and both things right now are just filling up tremendously, and we're so thankful, so we hope that all of you can make it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mohammed Awadallah?
Good evening. Mohammed Awadallah, 12510 Gravilla Avenue. As you all know, last city council meeting, we had an individual that owns a business named John from T-Shirt Outlet, had an issue on the day of the parade where Hawthorne Way was shut down, and we had our festival for Eid al-Athha, Islamic Center of Hawthorne. So I met with the board members of the Islamic Center of Hawthorne, and we do apologize for that day. We, you know, we didn't mean no harm, and I have a check from the Islamic Center of Hawthorne and myself, and one from the Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce. So we do apologize. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wishing to address the city council from the line? Okay, I have one more person?
Good afternoon, Mayor, council people. Lely Fernandez, North Hawthorne Community Association, and I'm here because I would like to point out facts that were overlooked by the Cannabis Committee. After speaking with Narcotics Unit during Hawthorne Police Presentation on Cannabis, we were informed how dispensaries focus and market edibles to children by exhibiting bright colors and recognizable flavors that children are known to eat. In addition, you need to take into consideration amounting work these shops will create on our Hawthorne Police Narcotics Unit. Therefore, they themselves are 100% against shops. You continue to compare us to West Hollywood and should stop this, since West Hollywood is not considered a low-income or have a disadvantaged title like Hawthorne does. Do your homework. Continue to educate yourselves and give the community a chance to give a presentation with the effects direct to access to cannabis will have on the city, community, children, and local schools, Hawthorne Police Narcotics Unit, and crime overall. For those of you who want to fact-check me, all you need to do is speak to the Hawthorne Narcotics Unit. Also, keep in mind, dispensaries affect children directly, and once you cross that line, I will leave you with one verse, Romans 12:19. Avenges mine, I will repay. God punishes the wicked and those who hurt his children. No one cannabis. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I don't see anyone else lined up. So if there's no more oral communication lined, I declare oral communication closed ordered. Okay, let's see. Mr. Clerk, your consent calendar, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have four items on the consent calendar. There are items one through four for your consideration and approval. Item three, approval waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item four, city treasurer's request approval of the warrants. Item five, resolution number 8371, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, proclaiming Tuesday, August 2nd, 2022 as National Night Out. Item six, resolution number 8372, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, proclaiming August 26th, 2022 as Women's Equality Day in the city of Hawthorne for adoption.
Just a quick, quick question, Mr. City Manager. National Night Out, our citywide event will be starting at what time and where on August 2nd?
5:30, Memorial Center, outside. Would be on the north side of the facility.
5:30 p.m. It's a national night out. Everybody comes after work, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Sponsored by the police department.
Oh, and I'm sorry, yeah, sponsored specifically this time by the police department, right? Thank you to our police department. I make a motion?
Second.
Please vote.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes. That concludes my consent calendar. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. City Manager, General Matters, do you have an update on a, do you have an update or is somebody supposed to give an update?
Yes, we have an update from Dion Rambo from Rambo House. If you can come up, please. He's in the back.
Hello, Mr. Rambo.
Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to give you a quick update, nothing really fancy with all of the drawings and stuff, but just wanted to give an update of kind of but just wanted to give an update of kind of, one of the things that Von and I talk often about what's happening in Hawthorne and what's happening with the vans even outside of Hawthorne. So what I shared was just some startling information, what we've been dealing with, with the vans that are parked in your areas. Um, one specifically is, and I know as we're ending this term period with us together, considering maybe going into another one or not, um, change up that direction or whatever you guys may want to change up. Um, the growing concern with syphilis, I don't know if you guys knew that, but it's a, it's grown in this area 800%. I don't know if you guys knew that or not. So I, I think it has a lot to, obviously because of the homeless side, because of the drug side. And of course, we're getting a lot of these people actually walking up to the vans now because they don't know which clinics to go to. So I'm hoping that things like this and we're dealing with more younger, tay age, transitional age youth, that 18 to 24, I think that, I don't know if they're necessarily homeless or if they're running from home, but we're getting a lot of them now coming to the van. So if it is something we're gonna continue, one of the things that I would recommend and suggest in doing the telehealth van is maybe, we would like to do more partnerships with Hawthorne-based things such as your hospitals. So those with syphilis, we can actually, you know, we have people who work with them full-time on the screen who can get them to someone who can treat these things. And of course, a lot of these are women, either abused women, young women, et cetera. So with that growing by 800%, it hasn't really been, I think the only person probably mentioned it in their report is Supervisor Mitchell so far because it's kind of one of those things where they don't want to force people to start checking their children. But that's a huge growing one. So if we are to continue at all, if you would consider continuing the telehealth van, we'll still keep doing what we're doing. We're helping a lot of people increase their medical insurances and getting all that taken care of. We're working even more closely with Behavioral Health Services. I love doing that personally because they become actual patients in intake of Behavioral Health Services versus just coming to the vans. I think this type of partnership approach is a good phase, even if we do it as of six months or whatever with telehealth van to continue. Um, but I just wanted to give you an update on what's happening out here. And perhaps consider using telehealth van to always kind of tell you what's happening in the streets with what's coming up. But just wanted to update you all on that. Of course, I'm always open for questions and all of you have my cell number if you wanted to call me directly. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you, Rambo. Can you please speak on, uh, the last year? What the success rate has been with your services, please?
Yep. Um, I'll go back a little bit off of memory, but, um, I'll, I'll go off of memory a little bit on what the numbers were. I did give you, I think you were here at the time, but I did give everyone kind of printouts of what we've been doing so far. Um, this is just kind of catch up, but fundamentally, at that time, the focus was, the numbers were, I won't go into the numbers, I don't know the numbers by heart, but I can't, we grew tremendously with the telehealth van who was coming up. We even learned which areas were the strongest, which weren't strong. Um, for example, we do recommend, we were getting a lot of people who were walking from 120th and Prairie Area. Um, so that became kind of a, I'm assuming that's a hotspot that we should probably talk about in terms of the vans. Um, at that time, mental health and mental illness was a big thing. Um, we're seeing this shift. Now we're getting people who probably have mental illness, but they're coming because of an issue. Like they're coming because of syphilis or they're coming because, domestic violence is a huge one where a lot of women are just kind of coming to the van, banging on the van for support. We're getting some of them too. Um, so it's different, it's different, Ms. English, because in the past, the numbers were more based on people coming for mental health support for their loved ones, which you've seen here when they, when they would be parked in front of your spot. Um, but now it's shifting into what we, what I just spoke of. But if you would like, I would email you over the exact numbers and, and the contact, the contact names, et cetera, what happened when they walked up to the van and when they finished seeing the van. So I'll send it over to you.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
You said you're hitting on some spots. What are the areas that you're hitting the most?
Well, um, we visit different spots. So when we're not as busy here, we talk to, um, the city manager about when it's slow, we would able to, you know, two of our vans would go around. DMV is one of the hottest spots that we hit, that we get the most interaction with the, um, people in line or things like that. They're starting to get very comfortable and used to us being there. This is probably one, another one that we probably want to work with to do more time with places like DMV, whereas while they're there, they might as well talk about, you know, shelter and things like that. Um, that's one of those things. I was meeting with, one of the things I can say before I go, Mr. Mayor, is I'm bringing you guys up more in a lot of the meetings I'm having. So even when I met with Supervisor Mitchell's office or Inglewood, um, today, it's always about Hawthorne and how you guys are utilizing the vans. And it really helps keeping us or not, it's, it's really helped us create a framework of how the vans could be used best in other cities and districts. And that was one of the things that I'm proud of, of, even you guys accepted us about a year ago.
Any questions?
Any questions for?
I think we're good, sir. Thank you for the update.
Appreciate it, thank you, sir.
It was good seeing you at the events.
Oh, thank you, appreciate it. It was amazing, amazing event.
Thank you for participating. It's good. It was good. All right, so, uh, thank you once more. Uh, General Matters. Uh, Mr. Clerk, can you please read I, item eight for the city manager, please?
Yes, item eight, agreement contract number CCL 5253002 between the city of Hawthorne and Clean California Local Grant Program for the Zella Davis Improvement Project. Recommended motion, staff recommends that the city council approve agreement.
I'd like to discuss this.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, so I believe, um, the city manager has a report on this?
Absolutely. I'm very proud to discuss this topic. Um, not too often you get a $3.4 million grant. Um, and I want to bring it to the council's attention and to our residents' attention that staff is working very hard every day looking for money that's out there to improve our, our parks and improve our city. Just a little tidbit about, uh, Zella Davis. It's located at, uh, 3650 133rd Street. Uh, it's a very small park, but it's big in, in size, meaning that there's a school adjacent right next to it, Zella Davis Elementary School, that kids go through that park daily. Um, and they see a park that hasn't been rehabbed in decades. But with this $3.4 million, we'll be able to add a bathroom, workout equipment, a picnic area, and a new playground. Um, this facility or not facility, but that park is, uh, adjacent to 20,000 residents within a 10-minute walk. So it will be highly used and we're very excited. And we're very excited to break ground, um, at the end of this year. So just like to praise the Community Service Department, Public Works, and the entire city staff for, uh, obtaining this grant. And if there's any questions, I can ask, ask, answer them right now.
I don't see any, so I think we're ready to push ahead. Or you have additional questions?
No, move to approve.
Second. Please vote.
Thank you.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Thanks to the Parks and Rec team, uh, for obtaining the monies for this. So thank you to them. Let's give them a round of applause. Okay. Did you hit the wrong button? I, I didn't see, look, you're good? Okay.
I'm just resetting it.
Uh, yeah, let's reset, let's, uh, we, you haven't revealed the vote yet, right?
No, 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 we already voted.
You're good?
Yeah.
Okay.
There we go.
Thank you. Um, city manager's consent calendar. Uh, Mr. Clerk, can you please read the items for the city manager, please?
Yes. Item nine, agreement between the city of Hawthorne and Kim Lee Horn and Associates, Inc., and General Technologies and Solutions for Traffic Engineering Services on and, as needed basis. Item 10, agreement between the city of Hawthorne and RRM Design Group for Planning and Environmental Services. Item 11, progress payment number one in the amount of $424,052.93 due to Martinez Landscape Company, Inc. of Silmar, California for Holly Glen Park and Jim Thorpe, Thorpe Park Improvement Project, project number 22-03. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city manager's consent calendar. May I have a motion to approve items nine through 11?
Okay, motion granted. Second. Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Next, uh, we have the city attorney's consent calendar. Mr. Clerk, can you please read item 12 for the city attorney?
Um, yes. Item 12, deny claims of Filia Orozco and Pauline Gonzalez. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city attorney's consent calendar. May I have a motion to approve item 12?
Move.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Okay, uh, we have the, uh, discussion action items. Councilwoman Valentine, please proceed with item 13 on Hawthorne Business Expo 2023.
Yes, so Hawthorne Business Expo 2023 will be held next year on April 26th, 2023. I am seeking to retain leadership of Hawthorne Business Expo 2023, the committee for next year. I will no longer be on the council, but I am willing to volunteer to continue to be in charge of the planning committee, which is already in place. Um, planning is already underway, underway for the Save the Date advertisement to be printed and distributed. I am also directing the city attorney to have the name Hawthorne Business Expo copyrighted in the name of the city of Hawthorne so that the city will secure the name and there will be no threat that it will be taken by some other entity.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm not understanding. If we have it listed as a city event and that's the name of the event, I don't understand why it should be copyright. And the reason I say that is because, uh, I could say copyright Operation Gobble, my Operation Gobble, copyright My Service Provider Fair, copyright Locks of Love. I mean, there's a lot of events that has happened in the years that I've been here and I've never.
That is true, and they can all be copyrighted.
Right. Unfortunately, that's costly and that's, in my opinion, unnecessary. Uh, it's already a city event. It's the name of the city. Whether or not it's used elsewhere, I think would be, well, redundant, to say the least. The city is the authority agency over that, that name, that title. I, I think we're just.
The city has no legal authority over the name.
It's, it's a city event. It's under the city's purview. More importantly, you've, you've done in the past accounts under your, your business expo. You've had accounts opened through the city. So, you know, what's, what's, I don't understand what's the need for a copyright.
Well, the need is, in my view, um, it's, it's, it's very possible that some other entity would try to take ownership of it and try to use the name. And I, and this way, no one else would be able to use the name. That's what I'm trying to prevent.
But you're gonna be hosting it, you're gonna be running it. So, I mean, they're not in, I don't think necessarily, we're gonna know when we're gonna rent out the space at the Memorial Center for the city's Hawthorne Business Expo. We're gonna know it's ours. If some other entity wants to come and say, hey, we want to rent the space for Hawthorne Business Expo, we're gonna know it's not them, it's not us, right? So it could easily be turned down if that's what you're concerned about.
Through the chair. Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, I, I definitely think, think is a good idea for you to continue to oversee the, the, um, production of the event that you've been overseeing for quite some time. But i- it seems like, um, it would make sense for this event to be produced by a organization, a nonprofit, that's not the city of Hawthorne and continue to be sponsored by the city of Hawthorne. And then that organization, they want to choose to copyright that, the name of, of that event. Um, I think that, that would probably make the most amount of sense as opposed to Hawthorne, uh, doing that. I, I don't think there'd be anything wrong with there being multiple business expos throughout the city of Hawthorne if there's a particular logo or, or whatever that, that's consistent with that event put together by that leadership group. Um, yeah, I definitely understand the need to want to protect that logo or that, that intellectual property, but I don't think that the city should do that. I think whatever nonprofit or organization that's producing that event should do it.
And this is exactly what I'm talking about because whatever non, whatever the city uses in the future, whoever the city uses in the future to produce its events can claim ownership of the name. And, and the city would have no recourse. So my, you, you proved my point. I think the city should claim ownership of the name Hawthorne Business Expo to prevent that sort of thing from happening. So that in case someone does, for example, use the, um, take it over in the future to produce an event, they cannot say, this is my event and, and I'm claiming the name.
I hear what you're saying. I, I'm just personally, I don't think Hawthorne, the city should own the name of any event necessarily. We definitely should continue to sponsor events and support events, but I don't think we should get in the copyright business or the, the owning of events necessarily.
It's listed as a city event.
Look, uh, let me, I'm just gonna give Mike full comments. I'm gonna be very open. Mr. City Attorney, is this, uh, is this event? Is this event, uh, something that you can easily copyright in the name of the city?
You know, that's an issue that I'm gonna have to look into. I, I don't, I have never practiced intellectual property, but I could inquire and do some research about it. Um, but, um, I, I, I can't give you an answer at this point. That's a, that's a legal issue that I would have to look into.
All right, I'm gonna just be very open. And the problem that we had recently was that the city, exactly. The city has, uh, organized this event, uh, through the sponsorship or through the leadership of Councilwoman Valentine. Okay, we've had this event and there was different members of the community that, uh, were participating in that and nonprofits. Uh, and the Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce, Pat Donaldson, sought to undermine Councilwoman Valentine by copyrighting the name of the Hawthorne Business Expo behind her back. She utilized two campaign consultants to try to copyright the name of the Hawthorne Business Expo when she had done all the work. Everybody here knows that. And I'm not gonna play stupid and play be political and not say something about that.
I don't know anything about it.
Well, I'm, I'm telling you guys, and that's improper, that's pretty messed up. And for what purpose? For whatever political purpose she wanted to do that? That's what she tried to do. Okay? That's why she wants to protect the name so that the city of Hawthorne can have a good event. Uh, in my opinion, the Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce has been very political and has, uh, crossed the line when it comes to certain things. Those are my comments. Those are my opinions solely. But for that to have happened, that she tries to copyright the name behind the back of the city and Councilwoman Valentine, I think that's improper. For those reasons, I think we should protect that not only the names of the Hawthorne Business Expo, but the names of the, uh, Operation Gobble, Gobble, um, the Service Provider Fair, all in one swoop because we're gonna organize those things. Competing, what, competing what? Competing Hawthorne Business Expo? That's redundant. Competing the, uh, national night outs, national competing events? I think there is a, a basis for requesting this, uh, this copyright not only for that event, but all the other events that we as individuals kind of are, have on our list that we have as, uh, city elected officials. Is that not true, Councilwoman Valentine?
It is true. And I, and my, my purpose in doing this is because I will no longer be on the council and I cannot be personally do anything to protect the name. If the name is protected, then it will always be in the name of the city of Hawthorne. But in the future, if someone else tries to take it over, if someone else organizes and claims that they own the name, we'll have no recourse. That's what I'm saying.
Through the chair.
I mean, my, my only concern about cooperating with the city name because it's a kind of generic name. It's not necessarily like a, a branded name. Like what's stopping somebody from saying, uh, they're gonna, they're gonna do, you know, Bob Jones, Operation Gobble? Like all you have to do is just, you know, or say, I'm gonna do the, um, Hawthorne Business Expo 2023. Like, like it's really easy just to make a simple change. There's no, there's no logo, there's no branded name, there's no intellectual property there. Like it's just a description of event.
We do have a logo.
And, yeah, definitely that logo should be, I can understand that, you know, intellectual property wanting to be protected, like a specific logo for sure. Uh, but if it's just the name of an event, like, I don't think, you know, we would spend a lot of money to protect a certain set of letters and somebody can just add "the" in front of it or add their last name in front of it. And it's not violating that event. Long as they use a different logo, they can do the same thing. So, I mean, if there is some intellectual property, like a, a logo, like, you know, our logo, and if that belongs to the city, definitely we should protect it. But I, it just sounds like it'd be a lot, a whole cat and mouse game if we, if we trademarked a, a title of an event.
And, uh, I'd just like to add to the Mayor Pro Tem, what he, his comments are. Okay, I, I accept certain things that you're saying, but I think it's worth the city attorney's, uh... Okay, I I accept certain things that you're saying, but I think it's worth the city attorney's looking into that and seeing what the extent, the power of something like what she's requesting, how that would protect us. Because I believe you're right. I believe that there's people who can change the the letter here and do all this funky stuff, but I believe that this in these copyright laws will solidify, well, even though they do the the little change of the letter, even though they change a couple of words or something in the title, it's the spirit of the name that's being protected, not just the exact lettering and phrases. So I'm not sure either how this would protect us, but I think it's worth the city attorney to be able to look at that. But I needed to put the what the origins of this are. Could that be something that you could research, Mr. City Attorney? Or do you have that already or what?
No, 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 I I don't have that. I would have to look into that. But so far, I don't have a clear direction because it appears that we have a Councilwoman Valentine wanting two issues to be decided by this council. First is whether she can remain, even when she's not a council member, as a volunteer at in the planning committee for the Business Expo 2023. That was first issue. The second issue was the copyright of the name of Hawthorne Business Expo. And it appears to me that there is no clear direction because from what I'm hearing, Councilwoman English and Mayor Proten Patterson seems to be not in complete agreement. So I don't have a clear direction. So if you want to take it to a vote, I I could get a clear direction, but it can't be a direction where I can look into the issue, but we don't really have a clear direction for the staff.
I would agree to looking into if, just looking into it, right? Like, i- is that something we can do? What that would look like, what the cost would be and what the, I guess, risk would be? Like, you know, is what I'm saying accurate? Like, you know, we copyright one set of words, can somebody just change up the name and get away with that just fine? So just kind of, I would agree with looking into it, getting more information. But also, is this a city-owned event? Like, do we do we have the authority to grant somebody access to the planning committee? I I've just always understood that it was the councilwoman's event, and of course, the councilwoman's also a councilwoman, and the city has kind of sponsored it.
Well, it's listed as one of many city-sponsored events, like World Fest and other events that we have there. And every once in a while, there's a request to update the list because we don't no longer some of the events on the list, it hasn't been.
Does the city own the event? Or we just have the ability to?
I don't I don't think there's an ownership. I don't know the origin of this, whetherby it was a resolution, but there is no ownership of an event unless, right now, I hear Councilwoman Valentine wanting to copyright the name. But in terms of the ownership, it's a city-sponsored event, but there's it's not a an object that there's an ownership with. The name may be copyright, I don't know. That would have, that's an issue that I would have to look into.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I'm gonna I I'm gonna be direct too, because, you know, I didn't understand the back and forth and what's happening, and now I understand what's happening, and it's political in nature. That's what's happening. In 2018, when I left, all of the events that I had taken up, functions, et cetera, Montero took them over. Not an issue, no longer a council member, but I was happy to know that they continue because they provide a service to the community. You know, it's kind of hard sometimes to let go of something, and I get it, because you've been instrumental in in assuring a great Hawthorne Business Expo. But at the end of the day, it's the council members that continue those efforts and continue that work through direction to the city manager, city attorney, and committee members. It's really hard for me to look at an item for 2023 to say basically that you would continue in those efforts. I think it's not fair for the new incoming council members, whoever they may be, that they might want to, you know, take up an an effort as well, whether it's one that they create their self themselves or a a program, a service that's already on part of our list. So having said that, I also believe that we're putting a copyright legal issue before our city attorney's office should, you know, something like that come up that we're having to litigate when it's all political in nature. We have no control over entities that come to the city and provide a title either through a nonprofit organization or organization that has been, you know, ongoing for years, for all we know, and tell them that they can no longer, you know, do X, Y, and Z. Normally, these are nonprofit organizations. They're not, you know, they're, these are battles, fights that I'm not trying to get litigation, our city city entity attorney's office involved in personal political matters, including potential, you know, I would say defamation of character on persons that we're trying to, in in essence, shame or use in to our to our efforts. I don't think that's fair.
All right, let me let me just address that. This is not a personal political matter at all. What I am trying to do is to put the city in the position of having ownership over this event. I'm not trying to keep the event for myself. The only reason I was interested in continuing the effort for next year is because planning has already begun. I don't have any personal objection to someone else on the council taking over the event. What I would like to do is to preserve the Hawthorne Business Expo in the name of the city of Hawthorne, so that the city of Hawthorne would always have this event as 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 a as a great event that it controls. That's all I'm trying to do. This is not a personal political matter at all. So my 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 what I, that is the only reason I brought it before the council now. So I'd like to take, I'd like to retain leadership of it, of the committee for next year. If you don't want me to retain leadership, I'll give it up. But of course, that means that a new planning committee would have to be started. Everything would have to be changed now because planning has already been started for next year. You don't plan this thing at the last minute, you plan it months ahead. So that's all I'm saying.
Look, one last thing I would say. If, whatever reason, we ended up copyrighting a name, which I really don't think it's something that we should get into doing, it would make more sense if it was Hawthorne's blah, 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 blah event. So if it was a city of Hawthorne's Operation Gobble, city of Hawthorne's Business Expo, city of Hawthorne's blah, 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 then that would, I guess, make sense with the city of Hawthorne, I think, is protected. But unless, but if it's any other name, like, I think anybody has a right to say, you know, Bob Jones Business Event or whatnot.
And if you wanted to change it to City of Hawthorne Business Expo, I wouldn't have a problem with that either. I'm not trying to retain this name for myself. I'm doing it for the city.
I don't I don't necessarily know if the city should be owning events, but I definitely, I mean, if you were leading up this event like you always have, I have no problem supporting that event, but just a question of should Hawthorne be owning events?
It's already listed as a city event. It's listed as a city event, and and it's been, it's a city-sponsored event. We up here give our stipends to whatever organization, event that has occurred in the city. Now, if you want to, if you want to, if you if you want to provide, you know, your stipend for to look into copyrights, you know, say that you'd like to do that. Look at, look at using your stipend for a copyright. I don't know, but what I'm saying is you you're putting something on us that we believe shouldn't be something in a legal matter, because if somebody uses that and it's copyright through us, are you asking us now to sue them, to go for a challenge now to the courts over a a name that is already listed as a city event? We don't have control over people and what they do with regards to how they name their events.
Okay, real quick, look, we don't know if there's power in copyrighting it or not. So I think the councilwoman is is asking for the city attorney, I'm asking for the city attorney. I think we had another individual ask, look that, look that up, give us a, give us a, give us the information that we need. We're assuming it's not going to protect it, maybe it does, maybe it doesn't. Maybe we're making assumptions that it's not. With regards to, when is the Hawthorne Expo? January or February?
No, it's going to be next April.
Next April?
April 26.
All right. So I think it, I think the right thing is that we have, even if the councilwoman is not on the council, on the council, there's all that preparation that has taken like a whole year to to prepare for this stuff, you know? And I think there's just some continuity, at least for this next event, that I think we could have the councilwoman just be on part of that committee and continue. And then if there's an additional council member that wants to help her from here or newly elected, they could join. But I think the proper thing is for the continuity of that event, which has been successful, is just to have her in that role, and then we could decide the legal issue later or not.
Do you want to take these issues separately?
So I'll, I think I have clear direction with in terms of looking into the copyright issue. So I'll look into that and come back with a answer for council. If it involves potential litigation and whatnot, then it will be by way of legal confidential memorandum for city council. In terms of continuing the leadership of Councilwoman Valentine when she's no longer with as a member of city council, that I don't have clear direction yet.
So I would, I would be, I would be willing to support you to, just for the continuity, at least this next event. And then after that, then we could reshuffle.
Yeah, I mean, whatever, I mean, whatever event you've already been planning, like, of course, I would support you continue to plan that.
All right. So do you now have clear direction?
I do, but.
On that issue?
For the direction for the city attorney is actually the looking into the copyright issue in terms of the vote for continuing Councilwoman Valentine as continuing the leadership as chair of the planning committee that should be taken by a vote.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Second?
To the chair. It was noted as volunteer. That was her words, not chairman.
And I and I would like to continue as volunteer chair. That would be my, that would be my request.
Volunteer, okay, my my motion's reconstituted as I support Councilwoman Valentine as the volunteer chair for the Hawthorne Business Expo to establish some continuity, at least for this first term. We see where we go after that.
That's for the planning committee, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Please vote.
No, this is going to be, I believe it was moved by Mayor Vargas, and it was seconded by Councilwoman Valentine, I believe. So that's for a vote for, yes, 2023 Hawthorne Business Expo, allowing Councilwoman Valentine to continue her work as a volunteer chair of planning committee.
The motion's been made and it's seconded, please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Look, guys, I just want to comment, it's a lot of hard work putting on these events. It it really is. I remember when I worked with Councilwoman Rais English on the first service provider fair, I think I helped her into the second one, and it was a lot of hard work, guys, raising the money, promoting the organization aspect. So I I don't think I'd be able to be one of those people that could join Councilwoman Valentine with all those meetings that she has and all the organization. I commend her. So I think we should give her a round of applause for what she has done with the Hawthorne Business Expo. It's been a lot of hard work, so congra, thank you so much. And I congratulate all my colleagues who have organized events here in the city, because, like I said, it's a lot of hard work, raising the money for those. The city's not necessarily funding it, it's just giving some accommodations on behalf of the city. That's why we put it on the list. It's not a full monetary support once we put it on the list. When we put it on the list of events, we get to put some of our stipend money into those events. And doesn't mean that it's an automatic, you know, city's going to pay for it. It's just the, you still have to raise money for the entirety, so.
And we always raise all of our money for the event.
Yeah, so that's, I mean, that's, it's hard to work, man. So that's all. But thank you, guys. And if anybody has any ideas on any events on the council, I'd be glad to support you guys and help you out, okay? Okay, item 14. I'm going to pull item 14, table it, and reason being is that there's some considerations that I'll be taking for the recommendations of of the city attorney and the 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 committee EGMA with regards to the constitution of the constituting members for these committees. There's just some concerns, and I want to make sure that our city council, our city and my city council members are protected, okay? I'll leave it as that. Is everybody kind of, okay? Elected officials' reports and recommendations. We're going to do this part first before we go into the closed session. Mr. City Treasurer?
Good evening, everybody. Yeah, I want to thank Gordon Michael Migo for his presentation on diverse energy and how that's important. I totally agree. Diverse energy source is really the the correct answer because being reliant on all-in-one can be a disaster, like natural gas or something in Europe or things like that. I also want to say, like, what a great city to come here with the check. That's incredible, like, a really solid city of good neighbors. There was somebody that complained, and you not only are apologizing, but you came to reimburse him. So I thought that was incredible. On the treasury side, I really want to make a priority, the the PARS. I don't know if anybody remembers what that is. It's basically a way that the city can invest funds for healthcare retirement, which tends to usually go up, not down, sort of thing. So it's a way to do a little more investing, like, through stocks and stuff. So I was kind of waiting on this. We talked about it a long time ago, just waiting for the market to drop. No, I'm just kidding. We're getting, we're getting around to it, but, you know, I think this is a great program for the city to put some money into. So I'm going to really try to make that a priority, to get the PARS. It's basically a place where the city's allowed to change their investment so they can put it into more, you know, something besides fixed income so that it can grow and offset, you know, healthcare expenses. And that's kind of where I'm at. Thank you.
Mr. City Clerk?
Yeah, just have a few things. First of all, we'll be in front of City Hall on July 30 at 10:00 a.m. providing produce and registering voters. We provided a minimum of two large bags of produce to each resident, so please come on by. In addition, we've been providing $50 gift cards from Subway to community members through the grant provided by the United Way. The last, what was it? The last two weeks ago, we provided about $5,000 worth, and we did the same about a month ago. There's a reminder, there's a reminder that we've updated our city clerk's website with information regarding November's election. So if you're thinking about running or for voting information, please visit the city clerk's website and click on the link labeled "Election Information and Voting." Just another reminder about National Night Out. Please, you know, come out. The police department's going to be hosting it at Memorial Center Tuesday, August 2nd, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. There'll be hot dogs, bouncers, games, and a lot of other family-friendly activities. So come on and join us. And then to conclude, I just want to offer my condolences to Peter Wang's family, our director of building and safety, who recently passed away. I appreciated our conversations over the last years and his positive energy. Peter will be missed. And that's all on my end. Thank you to everyone who attended tonight.
Councilmember Rais English, please.
Sorry, I went this way. Yeah, I know you went. Let me say, I'm sorry. It's that we're here today. More importantly, those that made mention that they are new to Hawthorne, they're not aware of how our city works with regards to tenant landlord disputes. I know we've had those items put on the, we had them put on the agenda, on the website, right?
Yes, we did. And if you can use your mic for, I'm like here, and I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm like, I didn't know what you were pointing at. I was like, okay, I'm sorry. If we made sure that we put our housing rights information on the website, and we used to have a sheet sheet that we had up front with an intake sheet, can you just make sure we have the intake sheet at the podium so that folks can have a seat, take that information down, and pass it over to the appropriate department that needs to have that question posed to? I want to also express my deepest condolences to the Wang family, the Department of of Code Enforcement. It was. It was Code Enforcement, right? Building and Safety, I'm sorry, Building and Safety. Yep, Building and Safety, to the department as well, and to, uh, all of our employees there. Peter Wang was a hard worker, dedicated and committed employee here with the city, and I thank him for his time, and I thank him for that, I got to know him in, in the, in the year that I got to, um, speak with him. So, um, my deepest condolences to the family. Vaughn, if we could please have Republic Services come back out to address the recycling matter. I'd like to have them do a presentation and speak on how they're rolling out the new ordinance that's mandated by the state, and who's receiving those bins, to assure that they go to the appropriate, um, households and not to those that shouldn't have them. So if we could have them back, that would be great. With regards to some of the businesses that spoke on illegal, uh, operations, uh, thank you for that. I also believe that we need to just, uh, have a PSA or something that we could, uh, direct, uh, on Channel twenty-two, that if there's illegal businesses, uh, anything like this, just general information through a PSA, PSA would be great. And that includes just, you know, the rentals assistance programs, how, how to, uh, report illegal businesses, et cetera. Just general information would be, uh, ideal. Let's see, a couple of events that are taking place. I heard August thirteenth, at the Moose Lodge Casino Night, September twenty-sixth. I heard that's a golf tournament, and that's the Chamber of Commerce. I heard Back to School with Senator Bradford's office on August thirteenth, uh, from eleven to three PM. Let's see. I also wanted to provide a comment, because there was a lot of constituents and businesses that approached me during the parade that had questions and queries regarding the mall. Uh, although I cannot say, uh, a whole lot on the matter due to pending litigation before the Superior Court. Having said that, we must, um, wait for further direction from the Superior Court, and more importantly, through our legal, um, council here with our city. So, thank you to all those that had those questions, and yes, we are working on that. I know it's an ongoing question, but, again, we can't say a whole lot on that. I know I'm forgetting something else. Fighting hard for solar panels and, and the rights for those that want to choose up how they receive energy is their choice. And so, it's, for me, it's, it's something that I advocate for. Uh, you know, when the C, uh, the CUP was considering, um, taxing panels, that was something that we didn't want to do, and, uh, we made sure to, um, include a resolution in support of that. So thank you, again, to the members and for Mr. Matthews attending this C, uh, CUP commission to let them know our stance, and more importantly, um, listening to what the community had to say with regards to, um, solar energy. But other than that, that should do it. And, you know, for a finance, um, person, per stocks and bonds, municipal bonds, I'm hearing that, that's what's really popular right now, considering the inflation that we're under, and gas prices, et cetera. There's still good, um, bonds, municipal bonds, and those that, from what I understand, that we could still pursue. So, if we could look into that, that would be great. That should do it, thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, Councilwoman Valentine?
Thank you, Mayor. South Bay Fiber Network. It has been my pleasure to work with Jackie Baccarack and the South Bay Cog to bring the South Bay Fiber Network to the South Bay in twenty-twenty. This is a network that can be the underpinning to making us a smart city. This network now connects fifteen cities in the South Bay, including ours. This network establishes a platform for real-time transportation schedules, smart parking, traffic control, traffic management operations, signal control, parking space management, video conferencing, real-time parking, intelligent transportation, smart lighting technology, solid waste vehicle routing, automated license readers, and more robust public and private wifi. And it's the public and private wifi that I want to talk about now. We are now ready to move to the next phase, and that is to make fiber optic network, this, this fiber optic network available to serve the internet and broadband needs of our city. The next step is to identify a location to set up a neighborhood digital center. It should be within walking distance to as many neighborhoods as possible. It would be a facility set up with workstations to use computers, workforce training rooms, three-D printing areas, and whatever other needs the community identifies. I would like to direct the city manager to identify a location for this digital center, and to, um, communicate with the South Bay Council of Government, what we have decided, and how, and what, and how, and then how we can now coordinate the process of, um, of, of bringing, of making, um, the digital center and its, and its benefits a reality for the residents of Hawthorne. Pickleball. We started a pilot program of pickleball at Ramona Park this summer. Last Saturday, there was a good showing of residents. The program was only supposed to run through July. However, because it was well-received, I am directing the city manager to extend it through the month of August, and to look into seeing if we can make pickleball a permanent sport activity in this area. Um, I think it's already going to be one in Holly Glen, but maybe we can set up a second facility in either Ramona Park or the Memorial Center, or somewhere in that, in this vicinity. What's interesting to me is that it's supposed to be a sport for older adults, but at the park on Saturday, there were a lot of young kids playing. And, um, I, I found myself doing something I never thought I would do, and that was playing against kids. That was really not, that was really not what I had in mind, and you can just imagine who was winning those games. Anyway, that's all I have, thank you.
I, I would have loved to have been there to see this.
I know, it was quite, quite something to see, mm-hmm.
Mayor Protem Patterson?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hear pickleball's really grown in popularity. I'm not really played, but I've heard from other people comment and bring up the, bring up the game. Uh, a few things, try to go in some type of order. But first, you know, I really wish that the city of Hawthorne could do a lot more for our landlords and tenants besides just refer them to some county services. You know, my heart really goes out when I, when I see residents and, and, and small business owners, you know, who, who own real estate in our city, come to us for help and support, and really not knowing where to go. And, uh, and that's, they should come to us, right? You know, we're, the, you know, they're, they exist here in the city of Hawthorne. They should come to, come to the city of Hawthorne for support. And so I still would just kind of like to remind the city manager and city attorney to help us to figure out how we can be of greater support, over and above just referring them out to the county, to, to the county for, for their services. Uh, I definitely would just like to be a lot, a lot more help, uh, than, you know, we're able to, to provide at the moment. I want to thank the California Department of Insurance for coming out and talking about the low-cost auto insurance. I think that's very valuable for all of us, uh, and, you know, everybody in our community. Uh, I personally have, have my insurance license, and so, uh, I found, you know, anything insurance-related kind of piques my interest, anyway. So I'm glad to have them, uh, come out. I want to comment about the Islamic Center, Mr. Awadala, and the chamber providing a check to the T-shirt, uh, company. Uh, and I, forgive me, I know that's not their name, but we know the, the organization we're talking, I'm talking about. Uh, you know, that, the act that you guys did is really a great expression of, of what it means to be a good neighbor. Um, just really, really touched me, like, something that we don't see enough of. Uh, people just being grown up and acknowledging that you might have slighted somebody and tried to make some kind of restitution. Uh, it just, it just really touched me, I think that's spectacular, um, that you guys did that. Mr. Treasurer, I look forward to your presentation about PARS, um, and whatever recommendations you have. I'm always interested to hear about some good investment options and some diversification. Let's see. Forgive me if this is already on there, but if it's not, I'd like to ask the city manager, if you can have a staff put, um, maybe some kind of resources page on the city website that has, you know, of course Hawthorne Police Department, Republic Services, but also all our, our elected offices that, that support us. So of course, our assembly person, our senator, our congressperson, and, and our, um, county supervisor. And when those things might be on there, but if they're not, if we have, you know, some kind of good resource page, so people can, you know, can go there, and be able to, you know, reach out to, to those other elected official offices, uh, for whatever support that they might need. Um, I, I also want to give my condolences to Peter Wang's family. Uh, you know, he was very, very kind, gentle soul, and, and, you know, as I'm getting more gray on my beard, I, you know, I'm getting a lot more in touch with my own mortality, and just really, you know, hate to, to hear somebody, you know, lose their life, it's so young. It's just, it's just not the way it's supposed to happen. And the last thing that I have notes on is, we got an election coming up, I'm so excited about it, right? Just as a, just a, as a, a citizen of the United States, like, I love the election process. I love, um, having opportunities for the people to voice their, their, their positions through their vote. Um, I'm so happy that the, that LA County has upgraded its election, its voting process the way it has, to make it so much easier for people to vote. I'm so happy that the city of Hawthorne has moved our elections from odd years to even years to increase the turnout. You know, when I first ran for treasurer, uh, in twenty thirteen, maybe about forty-five hundred people voted. And when I ran for council in twenty twenty, about twenty-nine thousand people voted. And so, um, you know, it was just, it just makes me so excited. And this is gonna be my, the first election since twenty thirteen where my name is not on the ballot. So I'm very excited, very excited.
Very relaxed.
Very excited, right? As a, as a, as a resident of Hawthorne, to, um, you know, to, to see what's out there and see who's out there and, you know, support whoever I think, think the, the best candidate is. But definitely want to encourage the community to, to pay attention, right? To ask questions, right, to investigate your candidates, not just local level, but state level as well, and to, and to vote. Um, I, you know, you, your vote has power when you vote. People who are running for office, they know your name now, right? Because your name's gonna show up on the list, and, alright, and they, they have to now be concerned about what you're concerned about. So, um, it's, it's so important. And so I want to thank everybody, uh, from the community who's, who's tuning in to this council meeting. Everybody's can't come out today and make their voices heard, and are those just come out just to be informed of what, what's going on? I definitely appreciate it, I'm gonna extend my appreciation to, uh, city manager, to city attorney, and all of our staff, the police department for all your hard work, and, uh, also the, the graffiti team. I'm forever thankful for their hard work. Um, there's a wall near my place on one hundred and forty-seventh and Yukon that gets a lot of attention a lot of times from, um, you know, people who like to use spray paint and all that stuff. And, and the graffiti team, they're out there just like, right away, you know, smoothing over that wall, and, and definitely appreciate them for that, so, thanks a lot.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Alright, uh, question for the city manager, I guess my turn, Mayor Vargas here. I don't know. I don't know, I don't, I don't know it. I just, it's just, uh, ready to go in the back and just all over. Mr. City Manager, uh, are we implementing, uh, water usage control because of the drought?
Yes, we have all our updates online, um, and I'm not sure what stage we're in, I think we're in stage two. But yes, uh, we are following the mandates from the two water companies that serve the city of Hawthorne.
Okay, and that's, uh, is that, uh, has that affected the greenery in our parks, maybe?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Despite that, I know we're in a situation right now, I still, um, we still have those, uh, those fields that we have in the parks that are being used by, uh, we, we have a prohibition on, like, playing soccer and football on some of these fields, don't we?
Yes, depends on the field in question, we do have restrictions on the type of use that it's used.
Okay, I'd like to be able to make sure that we either remove that or enforce it, because we have, uh, families that want to have their kids running around on these fields, but there, we have these older adult soccer teams, youth adult soccer teams using those fields, uh, and tearing it up. If we, if we, at the time when we had, like, you know, uh, the, uh, allowed water usage, we were trying to feed those, feed those fields, we were trying to, you know, water them, and we just couldn't get a good green field, because they were, uh, you know, they were trampling all over those things. In addition, the, uh, the landscaping company was running their trucks on those fields. So it doesn't make sense if those people that are trying to feed and grow those fields are riding their cars all over the field just to get to point A to point B, so. Um, I, I would like to, directive, I would like for you to come up with like a solid, like, uh, plan for that, so that once we get that, that, that's gonna be enforced, you know? The anti, uh, soccer, anti-football or whatever, anti-team play, things that we have there. And if not, if we're not gonna enforce it, just take the, the whole thing out. Take those rules out, those prohibitions.
Understood.
Yeah. Alright. Um, the resource sheet that we do have for the, uh, for the landlord-tenant issues, uh, Mr. City Manager, that's the sheet that you distributed to us, right?
I'm, I'm sorry.
A one-pager that you submitted to the city council members for, you know, to show us that you had, like, all the resources on one sheet, right?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. I would like that to be reformatted, it's not, it's not easy to follow. It's just a jumble of words to me. So, uh, we need to have that a little bit more easier to read. In case of this, these are the numbers, in case of this, these are the numbers, in case of this, because everything is, you, you, fonts are all different, there's things in boxes over here, things in boxes over here, it's, huh? It was like a copy and paste type situation, so we need to have a little bit more time for that to be easily presentable, and for, to easily, to easily follow that. So, whoever's, uh, responsible for that, if we can make that, uh, just a priority to rearrange that. For now, we have the information there, so we're good. But the thing is, it's, it's, it's not easy to navigate. So if you could, like, task somebody to review that, please? There's a lot of information on there. One of the things, uh, that my colleague here forgot to mention is that we're going to be speaking, uh, to the South Bay Association of Realtors, both Mayor Protem Patterson and I. We're, we will be speaking to the South Bay Association of Realtors on Thursday, like, around eight-thirty, at the Ayers Hotel. So anybody who wants to stop by and take a look, I, I don't know if it's open, I think it might be open to the public, was it listed? Go ahead.
It's promoted to Realtors, I'm not sure, uh, if it's necessarily, I'm, I'm sure they wouldn't turn anybody away, but it's promoted to Realtors, and there may be a fee to it.
So, so, um, so we're gonna be talking about the state of, uh, you know, the real estate here in the city of Hawthorne. As y'all know, it's, I mean, it's going crazy, you know? Uncontrolled, you know, the rents are going up, the, uh, home prices are going up. So, I know that, um, Mayor Protem has a detailed, uh, presentation, PowerPoint presentation that he's gonna be showing. So, I'll be there to give my perspective on other aspects of things that are going on, so, good. So, yeah. I'm excited to join you, for us to be together there. So I talked about the eucalyptus, the South Bay Association, this and that. Alright. So, um, I, there was a resident that talked about the, uh, three, the three trash cans, the three cans that are out there, that, uh, they're referring to Republic, they're referring to Republic. Those are the trash, the recyclables, and the consumables. Those are two differences, and you're right, that thing's confusing. It's not the city that, that imposed that on the residents, it's not even Republic. It's the state. It's the state. And it's confusing as hell, and it's, doesn't even make sense as hell to me, as to why it's well-intentioned, everything they want, you know? You gotta remember, when people get elected to Sacramento, whether state senator or state assembly, they go up there and they need to have at least a bill to just, um, make their, uh, existence up there legitimate. So they just pull, they just pull anything out of their butt and just come up with it. But they don't think about how it's gonna be implemented and how it's gonna cost, right? You heard the gentleman over here? And what the hell? Is it a, a consumable, isn't that kind of like, you know, it's biodegradable? Isn't it gonna be biodegradable, like what you put in the green one? Compost, this and that, it's, I don't know, man. So I just want the residents to know that, it's not something that we're imposing, and it's not even something that, uh, that, uh, Republic is imposing, it's the state. So if you guys got an issue, go talk to them over there, or don't elect them, don't vote for them. But it just seems like we're already headed, the momentum is already headed in implementing this, so let's just try to make sense out of it. And you know what? If enough people kind of complain, or it just doesn't make enough sense, and it's just, I think even the state themselves will say, "Ah, this is not a good idea, let's just stick to the two." I think they'll correct whatever track that, that we're on.
I doubt that.
You doubt it? You doubt it? Well, I don't know. Wishful thinking, right? All right, the last thing, guys? Oh, thank you for all the residents who came up and spoke. And the last thing is, look, I've been receiving, receiving tons of calls, tons of emails, people stopping me and saying, oh, you're the mayor. Let me tell you about this. Let me tell you about, and they're talking about the homeless issue. It's not the sympathetic, uh, view on the issue. It's a, why are these people going onto my property, using my water to, to bathe on the side of my house? Uh, why are, why do they have to pull down their pants and pee in public, uh, to defecate? Uh, why are they doing this? Why are they doing that? Why are they panhandling in the middle of the street and almost causing an accident, et cetera? And so if, if it was one of us, we don't get a pass if we would do any of those things that those individuals are doing. So I strongly believe that being unhoused and, uh, and homeless is not a pass for bad behavior or illegal behavior. Because there's a lot of housed people that have mental issues that are going through a rut and are, uh, in a bad situation. So I think we need to turn up the dial when it comes to enforcing some of these things. And, uh, I support our police department if they were to do so. Uh, but we also have to, uh, make sure that we, uh, also meet the needs of the homeless and the unhoused in some manner which is responsible, uh, and, uh, and is sympathetic. But the thing is, some people are in a bad situation because they chose to be that, in that situation because of their, uh, uh, choices that they've made, others maybe not. So it's hard to discriminate, but the thing is, like I said, if somebody has a home, somebody rents, we're put in jail. We're given a ticket. We're given a misdemeanor or a felony. We don't get a pass. So I think we just need to start, uh, looking at, uh, anti-camping ordinances, being able to enforce that strongly. I believe another issue, guys, um, there are practical things, solutions I would think would make sense. And somebody gave me the idea recently, it's like when you get on the on-ramps and the off-ramps at Hawthorne Boulevard, at, uh, over there on, uh, Crenshaw, et cetera, and a couple of other places, do you have a shrubbery that's all along the side of the freeway? And there's camps inside those shrubs because the, the, the shrubs and the bushes are overgrown and you can, people are actually in there. It's Caltrans, but the heck, we have our state senator here, it's like, oh, I'm doing this for the city. We have our state assembly member. We need to have our people speak to them frankly, tell them, hey, maybe it's time that we take away all this greenery there and replace it with concrete. Hold on, hold on, hold on. All right. Thank you for sharing my sentiment because you've always shared my sentiment. So I think we just need to have a stronger conversation with our Caltrans, uh, partners. The, I don't know about the representatives. Okay, yeah, we'll let you know. Let me, let me go talk, let me go talk to my directors. Okay, I'll let you know how it goes. No, I wanna get some more immediate results and I talked to the city manager and said, hey, if these guys don't do it, maybe we can, uh, subsidize, I'm just at that, I'm not saying we're gonna do it. If they don't wanna clean up, maybe we could just clean it up ourselves and offer even to pay for, uh, changing the type of surfacing that we have there.
Through the chair.
Yeah.
We have, um, an ambassador that's assigned to this area from Caltrans. And that we have, to my knowledge, we haven't had any contact with this ambassador, but I think maybe we should, um, uh, see if we can make, you know, make sure that we have a meeting with that person.
I think we can, but I just really strongly believe in that they set that up as a buffer between us and Caltrans, just to kind of placate us.
I'll take it upon myself, I'll call Caltrans.
Yeah, please have them come. And Mr. City Manager, I think that that's a solution that we could, or else we're gonna have people coming out of their shrubs, going off and panhandling in the different sections of Hawthorne, et cetera. You know? I think we should look, uh, Torrance has a, a solution that they implemented. I think we could probably consider that maybe. And that'll give us a stronger arm and wish to enforce what, what, uh, the residents are asking for. Uh, but we just need to, Mr. City Manager, you did form that, uh, committee with the, uh, police chief and the police department, right? To kind of come up with some solutions, sir?
Absolutely. Yes.
Okay.
We actively look into that, uh, matter.
So I just, I'm just saying this because I just wanted to let the residents know that, um, that, you know, I've been getting those calls. And we do have a representative from the state senator's office. We just need him to be in, I didn't know you were there, I'm sorry. Those are strong things, okay? Look, we just need him to tell, he, he work, Caltrans is a state department. We just really need some like solutions for those off, on-ramps and off-ramps, man, because it's just very problematic for us. If you can already kind of, uh, let, start giving heads up that we're going in that direction. Once we bring our state assembly member and our state senators into the conversation, because maybe we haven't, then I think we're just gonna start seeing the little results. We haven't, so, right? So that's pretty much it. Thank you.
I have a go back.
A go back? Okay, go back.
Yes, I just wanna say, um, uh, I wanna sympathize with the family of Peter Wang. Um, the city is a family. We've lost now three members of our family this year. And, um, I really feel the loss. I think that, um, we all feel as though, uh, we work together, we see each other on a daily basis, we, we, um, so we sympathize when something bad happens to, to any of us. And I, and I am in great sympathy with Peter Wang's family and with the, um, and with Public Works, the Building and Safety Department, I offer my condolences. Thank you.
Okay. I think, uh, so we all share, uh, we all offer our sympathies to Peter Wang's family. Of course, everybody here, I think on council has had their, uh, individual, unique relationship with Peter. He was a very sociable person, really focused on his job and I, and I know so, and I just don't even wanna say how dedicated he was. Very dedicated, right, Mr. City Attorney?
Sure was.
Extremely dedicated to his job, um, and up to the last minute, so. All right, so I think that's it. We, we have a closed session. Thank you, council members, for sharing all these things. Okay. In closed session tonight, we have item fifteen. City Attorney Kim, can you read your item into the record, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, item number fifteen is a conference of legal counsel on existing litigation pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point nine subsection D one. Name of the case is DeAndres Long versus City of Hawthorne, case number two colon two one dash C V dash zero nine three five seven dash D S F dash A S.
Is there any member of the public that would like to address item fifteen? I don't see anyone. Um, and if there's no objections, I'll declare oral communications closed order. Today, we will be at the end. When we come back out, we're gonna be ending the, uh, the, uh, the meeting in memory of Peter Wang. So just to let everybody out there know that we're going to do that at the end, okay? So we will now recess the city council meeting to conduct a closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda at seven fifty-eight. for a conference pursuant to the agenda at 7:58.
According to the CDC, coronavirus is not transmitted through water.
West Basin works diligently to protect the quality and reliability of the water supply. On behalf of the West Basin Board of Directors, we hope you and your family are staying safe and healthy.
For more information, visit westbasin.org.
Even though California is flourishing in many ways, we are also facing greater challenges than ever due to climate change. Cyclical droughts, intense fire seasons, and pollution endanger human health and the environment. In California, we're doing something about it.
Governor Jerry Brown today signed a bill regulating emissions from landfills to fight climate change.
The organics law calls on the state's 40 million residents, its businesses, and every level of government to combat climate change by getting food, green waste, and other organics out of our landfills and get more good food to the 1 in 8 Californians, including the 1 in 5 children who are food insecure. At 23 million tons, organics are by far the largest material type landfill in California each year. Fortunately, yard, food, and other organic waste can be recycled into compost and renewable natural gas. 1383 requires new rules and regulations to achieve a 50% reduction in organic waste disposal by 2020, a 75% reduction by 2025, and actions to make sure 20% of currently disposed edible food is redirected to Californians in need. Enforcement begins once the law takes effect on January 1st, 2022. Achieving these targets demands a new approach and substantial new investments to restructure the waste management system of the world's fifth-largest economy. CalRecycle began rulemaking immediately after the law's passage in 2016. Jurisdictions should start planning now to meet the law's requirements.
1383 will affect every resident and every business in the state of California. CalRecycle is here to help local governments understand and implement this new program.
Start planning now to connect large food waste generators with your local food recovery organizations to help feed hungry people where you live. Start planning now to expand organic waste collection to all homes and businesses in your area and increase your local capacity to recycle this material. Start planning now for rate changes to fund these efforts, new ordinances for mandatory recycling enforcement, and changes to existing franchise agreements for hauler permits.
Some of this is new and some of it requires more of what you've already been doing. But all of it requires planning now to make sure programs are in place by January 1, 2022.
Recycling organic waste is an essential part of the state's strategy and one of the most cost-effective ways every Californian can reduce their own greenhouse gas footprint. Together, California will create a more sustainable future, combat climate change, feed more Californians, and improve the health of our people and our planet. CalRecycle is your committed partner in this effort. Get in touch with us to learn more about available support and resources to help you succeed. And talk to your staff about strategies for the next steps for 1383 implementation.
And, uh, Mr. City Attorney, you've been directed. Go ahead and tell us, give us your report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the city council met in closed session. Um, there was an action and approved a settlement in the amount of $100,000 in the matter of DeAndres Long versus City of Hawthorne. Um, the, the vote was unanimous.
Okay, if there's nothing further from my city council colleagues or staff, this meeting is now returned. At, well, let's, we're going to close this meeting in memory of Peter Wang. So let's have a moment of silence. Okay, may, uh, Peter Wang rest in peace.